Move down to item 11. Discussion and possible action regarding disposition of bid number 2019-02 for bulk fuel purchase and delivery. I get a motion?
Motion.
A motion and a second discussion.
If you have any questions, Mayor and Council, we do have a fuel tank at our Public Works Facility site, and this is a bid for securing those.
Yes, it was just, it's more of a corrective measure, and the fact that our amount's been going, it's over 50,000, so we're just staying within conformance of our bidding practice, and we bid it out. It was the same vendor who we currently use, so it's worked out. And their fees, it's all a rack rate that gets charged equally, and it's just the fees, and that's how the bid was assessed, and we're looking to award contract to Lee Oil Company for that.
We got a good rate?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions? More discussion? Okay, all in favor? Seven, nothing. Thanks, Renee. Item 12. Discussion and possible action regarding approving an access utilities easement agreement with Coastal Bend Properties Development, LPE. I get a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item before you is regarding an access easement over off of FM 2351, right into the north of the Timber Creek Golf Club Drive entrance. We currently have our water plant number two out there that has an unimproved access in April, and this and a related ordinance later on in the agenda will allow us to have an access agreement with the developer so that we can have an improved access hopefully later on.
So what, it's like a dirt road, right?
Currently, it is a very narrow driveway entrance off of FM 2351, and an unimproved, basically, dirt road back to the water surface treatment plant.
And unofficially having the developer partner with us, how much are we going to save on that easement by sharing it with them?
If the ordinance passes later on in the evening, our share will be about $160,000, and I believe it was...
Quite a savings.
Huge savings on that. That's a little less than a third of the overall cost, and it's giving us paved access from 2351 back to our plant.
Yeah, that's a good deal.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Seven, nothing. Item 13. Discussion and possible action regarding the acquisition and implementation of integrated body worn camera and in-car solution.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Motion and a second. Chief?
I think that means that I'll beat Renee, Councilmember Scott, on the presentation here.
Thanks for keeping it short.
Good thing you just gave me...
Also, I don't think anybody in the room believes that the chief's going to take orders from the city manager.
Take a lap around the chain of command later.
Okay, so basically, our current vendor, Mobile Vision, has not been able to keep up with the industry's recognized standards, and those are the ones here that you see on the, you know, on the overview. And we're not able to basically, as a result, we're not able to get the value for the money we are spending, and ultimately, that, all that does is create, creates, you know, some liability. The industry recognized standards here, those are the ones that are out there. They're evolving quickly, and so have really the citizens', you know, expectations, especially when we talk about the body worn cameras, not just the in-car video. Us being able to share the video with the DA's office, you know, via the cloud, will help tremendously with the evidence sharing process, instead of us running video down both the Galveston and Harris Counties, you know, which requires someone to physically bring those videos down there, and then if they're, you know, if they don't lose them, then we only get to do it once, but a lot of times, we get to do it several times. So this will be, you know, streamline that process quite a bit for us as well. And then, you know, factors shaping the public perception, they are high right now, and, you know, we can't afford to get it wrong, and that's both with the way we operate and how we record, you know, what we are doing out there. Some of the benefits of the system upgrade, many agencies in the area are using WatchGuard. It's reliable, it's affordable, and, you know, they assemble their products here in Texas. You all, I think, got the other bids that we got from both TASER, which was close to, you know, $700,000, which will do everything that we kind of talked about in here, and a little bit more, but what we get, and then Motorola is a product also that we looked at, which is not proven. They do great with radios and other things, but they're new to the video system, both in-car and body cameras, so, and they were a little bit more as well than WatchGuard was. So we went with a proven, reliable company that a number of agencies, not only in Texas, but across the US are using, so kind of learned a little bit from some of the stuff and that they've done, the other agencies, to include even implementations that a couple of the other cities are going to with, you know, L3 or Mobile Vision, not being able to keep up with the technology. Funding, we're essentially spending about $45,000 a year now on video. That's for hardware, software, and maintenance costs. Once we transition, the cost initially will be reduced for a 24-month period. That way, you know, we probably won't be replacing the body cameras for at least a two years, which get a little bit more wear and tear than the in-car stuff. And that will reduce for the 24 months, and then gradually increase back to approximately the same level as the hardware is replaced. And, you know, really here, the key for the presentation is, you know, switching for the, you know, value for our dollars.
Good work.
Any questions?
Josh, go ahead.
Thank you.
Feel free to give all future presentations.
Appreciate that.
Any questions?
Well, my biggest concern when we first started talking about it was the actual having our personnel simulate the product, and I was a little concerned about that, but after I spoke with Chief and Josh at the State of the City address, and the fact that when you turn the lights on, automatically, all the cameras come on, takes the human element out of it. I really think that y'all picked out a good product, and I'm going to support it all the way.
Appreciate that, yeah. So that's what we're trying to eliminate here, is get them to sync up, to talk to each other, so if in-car cameras come on, I'm not having to manually do a body camera as well, so they just truly integrate.
Have it instantly off when it needs to be on.
Correct.
All right. All in favor? Seven, nothing.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh. Thanks, Chief.
We're not ready for item 14 just yet.
Okay. Enough said. Item 15. Resolutions, consideration and possible action regarding the following. Resolution A, Resolution 2019-09, resolution of the City Council of the City of Friendswood, Texas authorizing and approving the 2018 Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Brian, expert on CDBG?
So over the last couple of months, we've been talking about different mitigation items. This is one of the ones with identified properties, a predictive loss property on Frenchman's Creek. The City of Friendswood had already applied for application for acquisition of three of the five properties through our CDBG funds, and Galveston County is looking to back us on that, to purchase the other two out of the five with their allocation of CDBG funds. So this resolution will just show support for their application.
All right. Any questions? We talked about this a little bit. All in favor? Thanks, Brian. Resolution R, 2019-10, resolution of the City of Friendswood, Texas authorizing aerial spraying over Friendswood by the Galveston County Mosquito Control District for the countywide mosquito control program.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Steve?
Mo, would you explain what you told me the other day on the Harris County side?
Sure. As this resolution pertains to Galveston County, Galveston County does provide aerial spraying throughout Friendswood. Harris County unfortunately does not unless there's a confirmed case of West Nile virus. So the City of Friendswood's crews and trucks will provide mosquito spraying throughout the ride of ways within Harris County, in addition to, we spray the parks and other public areas routinely.
Okay. Any other questions? Discussion? All in favor? Seven, nothing. Resolution R, 2019-11, resolution of the City Council of the City of Friendswood, Texas expressing its full support for the bond projects identified, prioritized, and publicly presented as being included in the fund, in and funded by the Harris County Flood Control District 2018 bond election, and requesting that Harris County Commissioners Court proceed with such bond projects, requesting that Harris County Commissioners Court not incorporate the use of HUD low to moderate income criteria to now reprioritize the HCFCD 2018 bond election bond projects.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Can we talk about...
Well...
Well, this is crazy.
Sure. Ed, would you like me to give background, or do you... Well, recently Judge Hidalgo came out publicly, Harris County Judge Hidalgo came out publicly and stated she would like to incorporate HUD's low to moderate income metrics in the implementation of their 2018 bond election. You may recall, Harris County Flood Control District had a bond proposition before the voters of Harris County a year after Hurricane Harvey, and a number of the projects in that bond were related to flood mitigation efforts throughout the entire Harris County region, some here in the City of Friendswood and the Clear Creek watershed. Incorporating low to moderate income thresholds at this point would infectively kill any projects that could be done or would be done as a result of that bond election in Friendswood. We ask respectfully that they do not insert metrics after the game. The game's already started, don't change the rules.
Voters have approved this.
Correct.
I don't even see how they can consider going back and reprioritizing after they put language on the ballot that was approved. Seems ridiculous to me.
This is crazy.
Paul?
At the last Harris County Mayor and Councilmen's Association meeting, discussed with Mayor Morgan's point, Mike Bechtel, this very issue. Apparently Commissioner Garcia is also in support of this effort by Judge Hidalgo. I have spoken with staff from Rodney Ellis's office, who's our county commissioner on Harris County's side, and explained that, you know, I certainly don't support it, and I took the liberty of speaking for counsel and saying, I can't think of anybody up here that would. That this issue had been approved by the voters, should be done the way it was written and sold, and that was what we expected to be done. So completely support this resolution. Similar resolutions being drafted by the Harris County Mayor and Councilmen's Association, and I would expect it to be voted on at their next meeting next month, so.
Paul? Steve?
Well, when I read this resolution, I have a concern. It's really addressing two points, because the way it's worded is, it says, "We're supporting the current identified prioritized projects," and then it's saying, "And please don't change, you know, to the low, to the low to moderate income." On the projects themselves, I'm not sure we would be supporting all of them yet. I'm talking about the specific projects they want to do, and not the total amount of money and all that. I'm in 100% support of the last part of this, the low to moderate income. So I want to make clear that if we're, which one are we really talking about here? I mean, what's the thrust of this? Is the thrust of this, "Don't change the LMI," or is the thrust of this, you know, that we support the projects that they've currently identified?
And I may jump in here. The projects that were scoped with the Harris County Flood Control District in the bond proposition are relatively limited, so whether we support them or not as a governing body, we can't go in there and tell them they have to do another project that they didn't previously identify on their ballot proposition. So from staff's perspective, whether or not we agree to the effectiveness of any one particular project they identified, the recommendation from staff is that, one, they move forward with what they proposed to the voters and what was approved by the voters, and, two, they don't insert LMI metrics at this point. So that's partly why it was worded the way it was.
Do you know if this is being challenged legally?
Nothing's been instituted yet, and so as of right now, I'm not aware of any legal challenges related to it. I imagine that if the Commissioners Court were to vote and insert LMI thresholds at this stage in the game, that there would be legal challenges from other jurisdictions, whether municipalities or other drainage districts, or by voters themselves.
Questions? Okay, all in favor? Seven, nothing. All right. Ordinances?
Ordinances, yes, sir.
Start on ordinances. Item 16A, ordinance number T 2019-10, second and final reading of an ordinance amending the zoning classification for a tract or parcel containing 1.8864 acres located at One Hatcher Lane, Friendswood, Texas, by granting a zone classification change from community shopping center to downtown district. Got a motion and a second. This is a second reading. Any discussion? Just time around? All in favor? Seven, nothing. Okay, ordinance T 2019-11, first reading of an ordinance amending the zoning classification for a tract or parcel containing 115.998 acres located along the future Friendswood Lakes Boulevard between West Ranch and Friendswood Lakes subdivisions, Friendswood, Galveston County, Texas, to change from single-family residential to planned unit development or residential development Avalon at Friendswood.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Aubrey, you're going to talk to us a little bit about it?
Yes, sir. I have the planning and zoning's recommendation, and we didn't get it back down to you at the last council meeting. So Planning and Zoning Commission met on March 21st and made their recommendation, and it was a four-three vote. So just wanted to give you a little bit of background on the discussion, and I apologize for this not being in your back-up material. I left town the day after our last Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, so I didn't get it in there. The, so the vote was four to three. We had three commissioners oppose, and I just wanted to give you a brief summary of what some of the opposition was. Some of the opposition was limited access to the proposed lakes. With the property lines going all the way to the lake, owners would own the property all the way up to the lake, so there are some pocket parks along some of the streets where other residents would have access to the lake, but, so that was a point of discussion. The percentage of lot sizes not comparable to other PUDs, and there's a lot size comparison with some of the other developments. This was in the back-up material for the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on March 21st, too, so anybody from the public can pull these, this lot size comparison up there. So West Ranch, Friendswood Trails were planned unit developments, and then Avalon is the proposed one, and then Friendswood Lakes and Sterling Creek are not PUDs, they're just standard 90-foot lot subdivisions. So the chart kind of gives you the percentages of the lot sizes and some of the amenities of the other developments. The lack of amenities, no trails, limited ponds, small parks, lakes being advertised as amenity are limited to some property owners with limited views for the remainder of the owners. Some of the reasons for being in favor of the zone change was market conditions, to provide a variety of lot sizes for the aging population, people who want to downsize, and for millennials who don't want large lots. Meets the spirit of the law, the density requirement for 90-foot lots is 2.7 units per acre, and Avalon is proposing 1.8 units per acre. And just to be clear, those, all those density calculations were done including open space, but they were all done the same way. Quality builder, strong track record for building homes that people want, you know, in the surrounding Houston area, meets the general purpose of a planned unit development per the zoning ordinance, and they are proposing private streets, so the city wouldn't be maintaining the streets.
Mo, is there any way we could get the plat up on the screen?
Yes, it's in the back-up material.
Just remind everybody, you can speak twice, so just remember, don't run out of your chances to speak. Don't...
Twice?
Only speak twice.
That's not one for me.
Two. Okay.
May I say something? Is it time for comment?
Time for comment. Sally, you want to lead us off?
Okay. Yes, that's right. Okay. I would just like to say that I was a proponent of the Friendswood Trails, and to me, this is a project that is similar in that they are reducing the density. I like the variety, the sizes of lots. Not everyone wants to have a big home and a big lot to maintain. Some folks are wanting to retire in place, and so they want to downsize. Some folks are trying to move into Friendswood, and small children, and maybe can't afford the larger homes. I also like, and this is from a city perspective, the private streets. That means that those will be taken care of by those private citizens, not the city. The one downside that I saw to this was the lake access. I did not realize that until I was going through the P&amp;Z meeting, that the access is really just for those homeowners who back up to it, so it won't be available to the entire HOA. I wish there were a way to maybe remedy that. I see that as a slight negative, but I will be supporting this project.
Steve?
I'd like to use one of my two times to ask some questions. The first one is, will all of these homes be paying into the Parks Fund for the city?
Yes, they would pay $600,000.
Approximately, how much will that be?
It would be $600,000 per lot.
Okay. And the second question I have, and I don't know if you can answer it, or somebody from the builder, but last time when they were in front, I asked for the estimated value that these homes are going to be sold for, and they were unwilling to give it at that time, and I need, I really want to know that information, so could they answer that tonight?
The applicant has, they're here tonight, so yes.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, first let me say thank you for your time this evening. Appreciate the opportunity, and I want to share with you Taylor Morrison's excitement about building an Avalon in Friendswood. We think it will be a wonderful addition to this beautiful community. My name is Bobby Skinner. I am the Director of Development for Taylor Morrison. Coincidentally, April Fool's Day, today I'm celebrating my 20th anniversary with the company. Started in home building and moved into development. The Avalon brand is the top shelf of our development, of our communities. I've personally been involved in the construction and development of Avalon at Pine Mill in Katy, Avalon at Spring Green in Katy, Avalon at Riverstone in Sugar Land, and Avalon at Sienna in Missouri City. I will also be personally in charge of this development. Also with me today is Bob Kulpinski. He's our VP of Sales, and regarding your question, I'm going to let Bob speak to that.
Okay, but all I need is that one answer.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
It's a great, great question. We anticipate home prices, depending on home size, of about 2,700 to 4,700 square feet, ranging in retail from about $400,000 to $800,000, depending. And to your point, Sally, and by the way, thank you for the opportunity to speak, this will be our ninth Avalon in the Houston metropolitan area. It is, there are three criteria that we require when we go to develop an Avalon community. Those are number one, and first and foremost, it's exemplary schools, which exist here in the Friendswood community. Number two is demographic trends that support the home buying habits of today's consumer, and number three is psychographic trends that deal with lifestyle preferences. All three of those trends are evident here in Friendswood, and that's why we'd be privileged and honored to count this as our ninth Avalon in the Houston metropolitan area. When it's all said and done, just to flush out a little bit more of what you said, Sally, the millennials, who are home buyers of the largest demographic in our country today, are saddled with debt. They are looking for lifestyle experiences and are delaying home purchases. So their home purchases tend to be smaller and later, and they're really looking to lock and leave quite often, to do other fun things that they have in their lives and raise their children when they come. Generation X and late boomers are on their way out with children that are aging out as they finish up high school and college, and they're currently the owners of the large homes that we see all around the communities, and they're the folks that really have aspired to the symbol of the American dream, the large private estate home. They will be soon looking to sell those homes as their trend towards simplifying their lifestyle, et cetera, becomes more and more evident. And then those that are late, or I should say, early boomers, that have the money and the means to downsize, when they do downsize, they do not sacrifice quality, comfort, or amenity, and they look for quality. So all of those trends support the attraction of the Avalon brand in the community, and we further strengthen that attraction and the community as a whole with monumentation, attention to detail in walls, fences, gates, amenitized home sites with lakes and fountains, all of which help establish, maintain, and appreciating, help appreciating home values for the community. So for those reasons, we welcome the opportunity to bring Avalon to Friendswood and the community at large, and I would turn it over now to Catherine with Meta Design.
Excuse me, I asked one question. That's all I needed. It's up to you guys, or you want to let them continue?
While they're there. So I am familiar with Avalon. My daughter lives in Cinco Ranch, and across the street from one. Are they similar in accessibility to the lakes?
Very much so.
So only those that live on the lake would have, are accessible to the lake?
No, there's always access to the lakes, but the primary attraction of the amenity of the lake is for the home buyer that's looking for that prestige. There's one thing about Avalon, which is gates, security, and the prestige of the community. Within the community, there's natural segmentation, right? So you have the people that can just get into Avalon at 400, and then you have the people that say, "I've arrived, and now I'm in Avalon on the water at 800." So that is a very normal part of the Avalon development plan, and there is always access for everyone, but it is homeownership on the water.
So is this the second time I'm talking with the second question? I'll make it, I hoped, a good one. On the lake itself, is there any recreation, paddle boats, fishing, that would be accessible to the homeowners, or is it just a viewable...
Mostly, I would say viewable, but I don't know what the amenities in the pocket parks are. Maybe Bobby and Catherine could talk specifically about that. They tend to have some nice pavilions and staging areas for people to enjoy the lake, not just stand on a bank of the lake itself. There are communities that do have lakes in Avalon. It all depends on the size of the water, obviously, what can be done on the water itself, whether there's paddle boats or something like that, but nothing motorized.
I don't have any questions. I just have a couple of statements. I have some concerns over the 65-foot lots, and planning and zoning and city staff and this council prior to me getting on here have approved 90-foot lots, and they did that in the spirit of the regulation to keep the density low. And I agree that the 90-foot lot should be like that. We have Friendswood Lakes and Sterling Lakes out there. They're all on 90-foot lots, and I just would like to see if you couldn't change this up so that it could be all 90-foot lots. I don't know if you could do that or not. But we have Friendswood Trails here, and when we talk about access to the lakes, those are only going to be accessible because your gates and fences come all the way down to the lake. Well, Friendswood Trails, when it was passed by the city council, had 21,000 feet of linear feet of system of trails, so all the people in Friendswood Trails could walk around and view the trails. They had 15 pocket parks, four amenity ponds, two small parks, all enjoyable by the development itself. This has one and a half amenity ponds, and we don't have access to the lake for everybody. They might be able to get a glimpse of the park, they might be able to get a look at it. There's...
There are communities that do have lakes in Avalon. It all depends on the size of the water, obviously, what can be done on the water itself, whether there's paddle boats or something like that, but nothing motorized.
I don't have any questions. I just have a couple of statements. I have some concerns over the 65-foot lots. And planning and zoning and city staff and this council prior to me getting on here have approved 90-foot lots. And they did that out of the spirit of the regulation to keep the density low. And I agree that the 90-foot lot should be like that. We have Friendswood Lakes and Sterling Lakes out there. They're all on 90-foot lots. And I just would like to see if you couldn't change this up so that it could be all 90-foot lots. I don't know if you could do that or not. But we have Friendswood Trails here. And when we talk about access to the lakes, those are only going to be accessible because your gates and fences come all the way down to the lake. Well, Friendswood Trails, when it was passed by the city council, had 21,000 feet of linear feet of system of trails. So all the people in Friendswood Trails could walk around and view the trails. They had 15 pocket parks, four amenity ponds, two small parks, all enjoyable by the development itself. This has one and a half amenity ponds. And we don't have access to the lake for everybody. They might be able to get a glimpse of the park. They might be able to get a look at it. There's a half acre there and a half acre there. They might be able to walk up to it. But I don't see that the same kind of pud that it was agreed to with Friendswood Trails. And when you look at West Ranch, they had two recreational centers with pools. And I know Avalon does a beautiful product. They have amenity pools that people can access. I've been online, I looked at it. They have two amenity ponds, a 54-acre park. And I know this is in a trail system. I know this is a lot smaller subdivision that you're trying to develop here. But I just, I don't see a $400,000 60-foot lot that a millennial can jump into. I have an millennial. He would have a hard time in that price range, even with these sized lots. And like I mentioned, with the approval of these lot sizes over here, you had, let me see, what are my notes say here? The puds that were granted, about 40% were less than 70-foot lots. Only 40% of those two puds that were agreed to were less than 70-foot lots. The 70-foot lots and smaller on yours amounts to 79%. What are future developers gonna do when they come up here and they go, oh, my gosh? I know that I can do more units, decrease my unit per cost on my fixed infrastructure development cost, which in Friendswood is going to be about $35,000 an acre. And if I can divide more lots up on that fixed cost, then I can, I can spread that out over more units. Every developer is going to be coming up here to council, asking each and every one of y'all to give them a pud. So I just really, I'm a little bit concerned about jumping into this, especially when you're not given the same amenities, even though Avalon is high, high, high-class top of the line. It's just that they're not going to be able to walk around that lake. There's not going to be a walking trail around that lake. And I just, I'm really concerned about it. And I just don't feel like I can support this the way it is at this time.
Carl?
First off, you guys do build beautiful homes. And I very, very much want you to build homes at Friendswood. I think you fit very, very well with the Friendswood brand. And I know the brake bills would very much like this to go forward as well. I think Councilman Grifon hit on it a little bit. You know, the decision made to go with 90-foot lots here to keep the density where we wanted it some years ago. Most recently, you know, we did provide a pud for Friendswood Trails. And I supported it. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you why I supported that one. The developer was hung up, it was an old golf course. It was a big horseshoe piece in the middle of an older neighborhood next to it that they're going to be responsible for in perpetuity to maintain. And he can't do anything with. Cost associated with that. There were apartments that were permitted on that property before the pud that were removed as part of this. So in my mind, the exchange for the smaller lots was worth it, remove the apartments. And then there were some other challenges. There's a piece of commercial property out in front of that older neighborhood. It was a triangular-shaped piece that they committed to not developing and leaving its green space. Robert mentioned the trail system. And they went beyond what most folks would do for trail systems. Pretty heavy buffer that went between the two subdivisions. And there were also a number of very, very old big oak trees in there that they took great lengths to try to salvage and save, and did so at the cost of lots and being able to build some of the houses that they would have otherwise been able to build. So it was just a tricky piece of property to develop. I wasn't really thrilled. I would have liked more 90-foot lots in that subdivision. But life is a series of compromises, and I made the compromise there. I'm gonna be honest, I haven't made up my mind. I don't know which way I'm gonna vote on this. The 7% number on the 90-foot lots is just, I think that's really where I'm hung up. I'm glad you put some in there. But I don't think it's any secret that that's really what we want to see built here, are the 90-foot lots. And there just aren't near enough of them. You know, and again, you've got some challenges. That triangular piece there, you're gonna have some issues with. I don't know also, I guess, with the pud, what the coverage of the lot is going to be with house versus green space and where that fits with what we would ordinarily allow. Maybe you could answer that for me, Ma.
They're gonna adopt the same regulation matrix that we have based on the lot sizes. So for the 90-foot products, they would have the 65% coverage requirements, not counting the driveways and flatwork and other stuff like that.
Right, so with the, with the 60s, it would be what percent?
Do you have that?
I don't know. I'm not knowing it. If you have to check too, so.
There we go. So for the 60-foot width requirement, you have 65, well, it's the same across the board. Maximum lot coverage. And that's, that's the concrete and the roof coverings on the lot.
And again, you know, this, we're creating impervious cover. We're gonna have a big drainage presentation here later tonight because of the flooding we had. And while you are up on high ground, it's still rain that will, you know, less of it will end up in the ground, more of it will end up in the creek. So I guess I'm willing to, you know, hear you out. And I don't, you know, last week, we were waiting on P&amp;Z to come back to us with a recommendation. And they recommended doing it. It was a split vote. And I'll tell you, that weighs a lot in your favor. I've just, I've just hung up on that 7% number. You know, if you guys were able to come back with something, I'm not asking even for 100%, okay? I'm just, if you could do better.
I like.
The houses will sell here. And we, you know, they've mentioned two subdivisions. The Forest of Friendswood, where I live, is another large subdivision with 90-foot lots. It's, you know, these are all very successful subdivisions, and so is, so is the Forest. And I know you can sell houses here with 90-foot lots. And you sell as many of them as you can build. Adam Hill builds beautiful homes.
I would just say one last thing, and I'll turn it over to Catherine. We are Houston's third-largest home builder. We sell about 1,100 homes a year, give or take, all around the metro. We have 56 communities, about 82 storefronts. And we see what's happening around the city in terms of what we want to build and what people want to buy. And it's a constant challenge for us to balance those needs because we understand the needs for space. We understand the need for, you know, price point, tax valuations. And we also understand, you know, just the fact that you want your community to be enhanced by what we develop and who we attract to your community. So we don't take those things lightly, but we do have economics that we have to work with. And Catherine would have maybe some more specifics on why we do what we do. My job is to then, what we do, make sure we have the right product and sell it to the consumer.
I would just ask you to trust us to understand, that we understand our community very, very well. Friendswood's a special place. It's not the rest of Houston. It's not, it's not anything else around here. I generally believe that we are the envy of our neighboring communities, have been for many years, and I want to make sure that we continue to be. And, you know, part of that is this rule that we've had in place for a number of years. We had another, we had another developer come in here and made a similar presentation. And we did turn it back. And then, you know, a year later, they came back, decided that they could do it with 90-foot lots after all. I'm, you know, I'm willing to listen to an alternative. I just, I'm having a hard time with where it is right now.
Sure.
Good evening. I'm Catherine Parker with Meta Planning and Design. So we've been working on the PUD for the property and have done the land plan. And just to address your question about the 90-foot lots, what we've tried to do here in order to accommodate the intent of the ordinance with the 90-foot lots, knowing that it is density being the issue, or one of the primary concerns, we have made the lot mix within the project. And that coupled with the lakes and the open space areas, the overall density of the development is approximately 1.75 or 1.8 units per acre. So that's fairly compatible with what we have on the developments that have all 90-foot lots. And so our thought with that is that, you know, we're providing the additional lake area rather than other forms of detention. And that helps to increase that overall open space, green space, lake space that keeps the overall density down, the number of vehicles traveling on the roadway and just the general number of residents within the community is very compatible with what we would have in, if had we done a typical 90-foot lot subdivision. And also, in doing it with the lakes, I mean, that further decreased it. So if we had done like a typical 90-foot lot through the whole development, we probably would have had more lots than what we're proposing now. I think the max that we could fit, depending on what the detention needs would be, which would be different with it being non-at-lake, we could potentially have up to 230 lots, and we're proposing 206. So as far as the density goes, that is something we're conscious about in doing the design and trying to at least keep the general density of the project compatible with what we know is important for Friendswood and still obtain the market diversity that Taylor Morrison is seeing successful in the area.
You want to go?
Yeah. Yeah, so I've been here on council for eight years and been in Friendswood since 1980. And what we've wanted built are 90-foot lots. And I've argued for 90-foot lots for every development for as long as I've been on council. I was not on council when West Ranch got built. Part of the reason I ran was because of the West Ranch development with the mud and the less than 90-foot lots. People in our community expect this governing body to always be consistent. The only time that we have wavered was on the, in my eight years, was on the Friendswood Trails development. I made the argument when Friendswood Trails was approved during its reading that the developer was going to develop the stuff on 528 and walk away. He was going to get his money on the, on the property upfront, and then he was going to leave. Well, lo and behold, he's filed for bankruptcy on every LLC that owns all of the property that's not on 528. So he did exactly what I argued would happen. And so for that point, we're left with the guy going in, making his quick buck off the small lots. We have been consistent. We told George West a year ago to go away and come back when you have 90-foot lots. And they did. And they made it work. And every developer that wants to do less than 90-foot lots always makes the same argument that, well, if it was 90-foot lots, we would have way more homes. Not if you had the same green space. And in this case, you're only talking, what, 14 more homes? I mean, it, even, and that's eliminating all the green space. So what we want built, we have argued, I have argued, and the city has stood by the 90-foot lot ordinance. I would hope that we would be consistent on what we do so that the developers that come to us, whether they're commercial developers, residential developers, or citizens, would expect the answer to be the same every time they approach us. Not that we would change based on which way the wind blows. We have been consistent. The Friendswood Trails development, I opposed. It got approved. And exactly what I said would happen has happened. You talk about, you know, you had mentioned about time. Well, this is the first reading. If it gets approved tonight, guess what? In May, it's going to be again, and it's likely to get approved. So in 30 days from now, if you vote for it and it gets approved tonight, it'll be approved. That's what will happen. That's the amount of time that we have. And then we comment about walking away from debt for millennials. Like, so millennials are walking away from all their college debt and their starting point for their new home is 400 grand? I don't think so. My first home was $90,000, and I could barely afford to make ends meet. That's not what this is about. Appreciated values. I made the argument during the Friendswood Trails debate, the George West debate, and every debate that came up here. The largest reason for appreciated values is the land mass. It's the growth in your property value. If you want to see developments where you have small lots, you can go to League City or Pearland or wherever else where you've got houses side by side that when you're cooking eggs in the kitchen, you can hear your neighbor's air conditioning come on. Those lots in those communities are not appreciating at the same percentage that those here in Friendswood are. They never have. So I said it then, and I'll say it again. I don't know why we sell out what we have. We don't have a tremendous amount of property left to develop. Why rush to develop it all so that we can stack as many houses as close together as we can and fill them as fast as we can? Why not be selective and consistent and improve developments in single-family residential neighborhoods like we did in the Forest of Friendswood or Sterling Creek? Consistency. Consistency, consistency. I know that's what the people who talk to me appreciate the most about what this governing body does. And most of them that voice their displeasure, it's with not knowing which way things are going to go. I will not support, what, 7% of the lots or 90%? We told George West to go away, and I think they were at like 35% to start. I would hope that this council will remain consistent in their voting on this ordinance. The 90-foot lots increasing to 230 homes versus the, what is it, 216?
I believe it's 216.
206, so it's quite a bit more than 24. But it really begs the question, if we're looking at $800,000 homes on 90-foot lots versus $400,000 homes on a whole bunch of them. Well, it seems like that would be a revenue enhancer for the city of Friendswood because we would be collecting more Avalorum taxes on, on the more lots in this subdivision than the less lots in this subdivision.
Part of what dictates that price point, though, is the amenity. And in this case, the lake lot, the lake frontage, all of those things. So the, the price point would not be the same.
Right. Around the lake would be 800. And then those that were away from it, that only could have a peek-a-boo, a peek-a-boo look at the lakes would be a lot less, say $600,000.
Right, but if we did an all 90-foot subdivision, it would be significantly different than what we're proposing right now.
You would charge more for a house on a 65-foot lot?
That 230 that I mentioned, that would be a different product. It wouldn't be the lakes. It would be just, you know, base detention. So it would.
You would still need retention, so I still think you would need the lakes.
Well, it doesn't have to be a wet lake, though. That would be the, you know, there's other methods. And so that's, the 230 that I mentioned would be if we just did the highest density we could. And in doing that, it would cut down on amenities, therefore, the price point would decrease.
So you're saying if you went to 90-foot lots, you wouldn't even do the lake?
We haven't looked at that plan, so I don't, but I'm, but to hit the 230 that I was, I was mentioning
I think you would be hard-pressed to do the drainage requirements for 230 homes without the retention of the lakes.
Well, you would probably have to have detention. I'm not, I'm not denying that. I'm just saying that the approach of how we handle the detention would be different if, if we were hitting that 230-foot lots. To do it on this current plan, we'd have less than, significantly less than 230 lots. So, so the price point, you know, would, would be different than that $800,000. So the numbers wouldn't be as, as straight-cut as, as that.
I understand. The last thing I want to say is I want to thank the property owners and what all they have done with the developers on the Friendswood Lake Boulevard line and working with the city. They did some wonderful things in donating property and monies and that sort of thing. So I really do want to thank them for everything that they have put up to make this project work. And I, I just am really appreciative for that.
And I just am really appreciative for that. But I just can't support less than 90-foot lots either. I'm going to have to hold off on that.
Can I save my second? No?
You go.
I do wish, really, you would consider coming back with something that increases the number of 90-foot lots. But having said that, I like what your guys are doing. I think the council or the ordinance is 90-foot lots, but there is an equal ordinance that says you can come to us for a variance, which is exactly what we're doing. And there's no difference between those ordinances. They're both on the books, they both carry weight. Second of all, we aren't setting any precedent. The way the process works, if anybody wants something different than 90-foot lots, they got to come to us, they got to go through the arguments that we're having now. And frankly, there aren't that many big pieces of property left. So there's nothing to set a precedence here. I respect the property rights here. Something's going to go in there, whether it's this high-end community or something else, somebody's going to build in there. I'm not, I think the 90-foot lot rule is put in place if you don't want to come and have the fun that we're having tonight and you just want to build and not have to deal with us, you do 90-foot lots at your starting point. But coming to us with something else like this is the process. And we are following the process. And there's no moral high ground in either direction here, folks. We're just trying to figure out how this is going to work within our city. Yes, 7% is awfully low for 90-foot lots. And if you could sharpen the pencil on that, that would probably be helpful.
I am going to support this. And, you know, there's a number of reasons. P&amp;Z supports this. I think that Friendswood residents come to me a lot and say, hey, Mike, I'm ready to downsize and there's no place really where I can find a home on a, similar to what I have on a smaller lot. I'm tired of taking care of the third of an acre that I have to mow. So I'm going to support it. Density-wise, I think, you know, you're following the spirit of our rule about 90-foot lots came from a reason. We wanted the density such that, you know, the infrastructure costs don't overburden the city. In fact, you know, having more smaller lots and a lot of homes, a lot of density, just we go in the hole supporting those homes and the taxes don't cover what the city pays to support them. But on the other hand, you have the density numbers. You're at 1.75 homes per acre, so I like that. I think Avalon is a very prestigious name to have in our community. I think you guys build a great product. I know of your product. Yes, people expect us to be consistent, but they also expect us to make reasonable decisions up here. You know, I mean, if we just, we're going to have a set of rules and everybody has to follow the rules no matter what, then you don't need us up here to make any decisions. We can just say, well, you know, is it, it's black or white? Well, there's gray areas. So I'm going to support this and I wish you well.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, I was just going to say that, you know, I've struggled with this as well, with the accessibility to the lake, but Avalon would be like a jewel coming to Friendswood from what I've seen in Sienna Plantation and in Katy. And I respect that P&amp;Z process and they came back with that recommendation. But it is our decision. And personally, I like the 90-foot lots. Personally, I do. And we have that ordinance. But as Steve mentioned, we have an equal one that says you have the right to come and ask for an except, not an exception, I'm going to use the wrong word, but a PUD. Okay, so I'm going to keep it safe. So in the street, you know, usually when you ask for a PUD, there is a trade-off. There is something advantageous to the city. And the prestige of Avalon, Avalon is good, but, and I thought about the streets, that we wouldn't have to do the upkeep of the streets. I personally don't like high-density housing, but a lot of people do. And I know a lot of people that live and have bought in West Ranch in our community is better for them living here. So I'm going to vote for this.
Anybody else? Carl?
Yeah. I think you know, you got, it looks like you're 3-2 right now in your favor that you know. There's two of us who haven't made up our minds yet. And we're both hung up on the same issue. Life's a series of compromises, you know. Anyway, you guys, we could have them come back or would you be willing to come back with something better than 7% on these 90-foot lots? And if the answer is going to be no, then it's going to be whatever Mr. Rocky down there decides. I'm willing to, you know, you got a couple here that want all 90-foot lots, but an ideal, I'd like to see that. But I'm trying to be a pragmatist here. I think you'll get what you want if you'll, for sure, if you love that number some. And I'm willing to talk with you outside of here. Or I guess we can go with the vote. I mean, so the offer, I guess, would be to table it if you guys for a month, if you guys are willing to. If you don't have the horsepower to make that call.
I do not. And I know, you know, that the current plan and the percentages and everything, there's a lot behind the scenes that goes into it. And no, I don't have the authority to make that decision.
Okay, I understand that. And look, I, you know, you guys build really nice homes. I want you to build your houses here. I just don't want you to build quite as many.
Well, and again, just to point out some of the things we're trying to do, she mentioned it, that, you know, the private streets, the gated, so...
I understand, but, you know, again, the private streets, that's going to be in the cost to maintain those streets is going to be borne by the people that live there. And at some point, they're going to get tired of carrying that cost and come back and look to the city to pick it up. A question I haven't asked yet, and maybe I can, do we, are they required to build the streets to the same standards that they do if they were public streets?
Yes, sir. They would have to meet the same criteria.
Same width, same thing, same, okay. That's good. But you guys aren't in the street maintenance business and neither is the HOA that's going to be in there. The nice thing about the city maintaining the streets is consistency.
Well, inconsistency is one of the things that Taylor Morrison does have and has proven through, you know, the almost two decades of products of the same type.
You guys build wonderful homes, you build wonderful neighborhoods. I mean, I've looked at what you do. I'm not disputing that. I just don't know how you guys operate in the maintenance business. And I don't know that you, you know. I'd like to table it for a month just to see if they can go back and come to us with a few more 90-foot lots. Well, maybe more than a few, but the 7% number, I'm just, that's where I'm stuck.
To follow up on Catherine was saying, there's...
Point of order. Was that a motion?
Yeah, I guess so. Let's make a motion to table it for a month and see if they can come back with something that would be a little more palatable.
I'll second the motion with discussion.
Hey, motion to table it. All in favor of tabling it? Opposed?
I guess we're going to get a decision now.
Well, I haven't spoken my second time, so I'll take this time to say that there has been a majority of council members up here that have expressed that they have a problem with 7% of the development being 90-foot lots. That's a majority. So the question is, if it's a problem, are we going to do something about it? Because we did with George West. And George West accommodated and came back with a development that is 90-foot lots. Georgetown. Georgetown. So, I mean, you talk about precedent. I mean, this is recent history. This is what we asked them to do and they did it. And their percentage of 90-foot lots was significantly higher at the beginning phase than 7%. It was significantly higher. That's outrageous. So it's one thing if, look, I get it, right? Aging community. So we talk about an aging community and that they need to downsize and move to smaller lots. Well, we are an aging community. Because in the last 20 years, we've gone from like 29-year average to 43-year average, which means those who have kids that are graduating high school and leaving, the parents are staying behind. Well, they're not staying behind to downsize because there's nothing to downsize to. They're staying behind because they love our community. They love what we have. So again, we've been consistent. If you were coming to us with 55-foot lots that were going to be garden homes for senior living and they comprised half of your development, I wouldn't have a problem with it if that's what it was. But don't try to sell me that it's millennials who are graduating college with debt who need to be able to find a home for $400,000 to start living. I cannot believe as a council that we would approve a development with 7% of the lots being 90-foot when we told Georgetown to go away and they had significantly higher percentage of 90-foot lots. And they did it. They did it. And every developer does the same thing. Well, if we didn't have, if we had 90-foot lots, we'd go from 300 to 400 homes. Yeah, if you took away all the green space. Don't take away all the green space. So I know a majority said they have a problem with the lot size. I would ask that you vote on that.
Well, every PUD request is different. You know, Georgetown stood on its merits. This one stands on its own merits. We have to make the decision based on the PUD that we're considering. So anybody else have anything more? Okay. So, all in favor? Opposed? Four to three. Okay, moving on. We are at the time where we are going to hold our joint public hearing, so let me get to that. I can have P&amp;Z take your seats.
We'll get that right after this. Do I need to read the statement under joint public hearing or joint public hearing? Commissioner Matranga, over to you, sir.
Okay, notice of a special and regular meeting of the City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission to be held Monday, April 1st, 2019, beginning at 6:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall located at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. The Planning and Zoning Commission Joint Public Hearing, the City Council, is now called to order. We will now receive comments from the public, both oral and written, regarding a proposed amendment to Appendix C, zoning ordinance, Section 15 amendments, and the City of Friendswood Code of Ordinances, Chapter 70, Vacation of Street, Drainage, Utility, and Other Public Easement, to change from joint public hearings between City Council and the Planning and Zoning Commission to separate public hearings and to amend ordinance's wording to be consistent with state law. Aubrey, would you please provide the staff summary?
Yes, sir. So just to give a little bit of history, we workedshopped this back in February, just explaining Planning and Zoning's desire to change this process. The current expedited process that we have was implemented around 2007. And that was following a development process committee that was formed to be, to make our processes expedited, to be more developer-friendly. And the process worked for that time and everything that was in place. There's been some changes since that implementation. In 2012, City Councils started meeting only once a month. And then in 2015, we hired a city attorney on staff rather than having a firm that came and could send multiple attorneys for us. So our intent is to remain developer-friendly. And a couple of points to that is clear communication and firm schedules to communicate to developers instead of shuffling them up and downstairs during council meetings and, you know, not being able to give them firm dates on action items. And next month, we will, the Planning and Zoning Commission has discussed it, and we will be bringing a resolution to change our meeting days to the second and fourth Thursdays of the month rather than the first and third Thursdays in order to help shorten that timeframe, the dead space between getting our recommendation and our public hearings.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak for making this change? Seeing none. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak against making this change? Okay. Seeing no further comments, the joint public hearing is now adjourned. The Planning and Zoning Commission will immediately move upstairs to the second-floor conference room and hold its regular meeting, which is open to the public.
Thanks, Joe. Good job.
Mayor, could we do item 14?
Yeah, I'm jumping around here. I'll pick up item 14 here. Thanks for allowing me to just do whatever I want on this agenda tonight. I'm going anywhere.
What number?
Number 14. Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Concurrence With the City Manager's Appointment of a Public Works Director. Motion is second. Do you have anybody in mind?
I think I have an individual. Yes, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I am honored to present to y'all this evening Renee Ibarra as the city's next Public Works Director. Renee has been with the City of Friendswood since 2006, started as a project manager, was promoted shortly thereafter to deputy director of our community development department, later promoted once again to deputy director of our public works department. And this evening, I propose that he's our next public works director. So if you could, could you please come up, Renee?
Well, to make this official, let me call for a vote here. All in favor? Seven, nothing.
He does have his family tonight here, so I would like him to introduce them if he could.
Be a nice time for you to say something nice about your family and introduce them.
If, if you don't mind coming up, please?
You can see he has a very small family.
So thanks for the promotions. Now, in all honesty, I want to extend my thanks to, as Mo said, I've been here since 2006. And I've grown a lot here and I've learned a lot. And sat in these meetings and I've learned a lot from everybody at the podium and everybody behind the council chambers and our communications with FISD and everybody. I want to, and it's not, excuse my language, but I'm not into kissing behinds. I owe a lot to Mo, Stephen, fellow directors, for all the mentoring they've given me and other cities that we've worked side by side with. And I also want to make sure and recognize my family because they're the ones who have been impacted the most at the house and been supportive. So I've got my son Joey. I've got my wife Naomi. Daughter, Cotty, Mia, Cathy. And then my two, my parents in the back. I had one of my brother and sister-in-law, but my nephew had a baseball game tonight, so I say, you know what?
You know where you rank.
I might be on a YouTube video, so I'll get them to watch it that way. But my mom and dad, they've been hugely my mentors and strive strongly on family and family values and they've been so supportive and always been backing me up 100% in our family and stuff. So that's one of the reasons I've elected and want to stay here because it is a family-driven town, community, and everything. So it means a lot to us. Thank you. Thank you so much.
I'm glad to see Joey got the memos wearing the right shirt tonight.
Yep. Yep.
Hey, Renee, we're proud to have you. We're really blessed to have you as our public works director. Mr. and Mrs. Abara, you have raised an excellent son there. We are very proud of him, as I know you are, and I just want to thank Renee for, you know, every time I've worked with him on an issue, he's been right there on top of it. He knows his stuff, except for that decision about buying Jim Hill's car. You've made good decisions all around. So, okay.